All right, let's call this meeting to order. This is the Lake Mills City Council meeting of June 7th, 2022. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Quaidow?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
All right, thank you. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the United Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
All right. Correction and/or approval of City Council minutes of May 17th, 2022. Can we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the City Council minutes of May 17th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. That's 5-0. That passes. Correspondents? Mr. Fields?
I just had all council correspondence, nothing from constituents.
All right, Ms. Curler?
I think we all received an email regarding July 6th Elderly Appreciation Day. It's going to be a celebration in Commons Park. And I also got a citizen contact regarding speeding and noise on Mulberry Street, which I forwarded to the PD.
I did want to highlight that Elderly Appreciation Day real quick on July 6th. It's at 6:00 PM at Commons Park. And it's being put on by a sixth grader, Molly Kroll. So kind of a neat happening from one of the youth of the community and recognizing the elderly in the community. And I also had two responses or two emails on the Sandy Beach Restaurant. So that continues to be a hot topic. Ms. Bishop?
Yes, okay, I received much of the same, the Elderly Appreciation Day email. An email about the Sandy Beach Restaurant and also an email inquiring about an update for dredging the Mill Pond Channel.
Ms. Quinnow?
Much of the same. I also had the Sandy Beach Restaurant proposal email with some suggestions as well as a follow-up email regarding Harvey Road and a speed limit request there.
All right. Thank you. So now we're on item six, which is questions and public comment. There is no public hearing tonight, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment also may also be made at this time on items not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting's been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So the microphone is open for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to speak?
This is John Quigley. I'm registered to appear by Zoom for this meeting.
All right, John, go ahead.
I'm ready to speak. Okay, I'm from Deerfield to South Main Street, and I'm calling in regard to an incident of a false OWI arrest that was made to me in 2018. It was considered by the City Council in a meeting on June 4th, 2019, after I'd made a formal request. And my understanding, there was a closed meeting before that session sometime in May to discuss the matter. And when the June 4th meeting of 2019 took place, they voted to pass a resolution denying my claim. And I'm requesting that this council, the new council, reconsider based on the fact that that council had some incorrect information and, I believe, incomplete information. They did not have the full information they needed to really rule on the request. I want to emphasize that this incident was a false OWI charge. Even though charges were dismissed, I still had to suffer a substantial penalty when my car was towed and I had to pay to get the towing fee. And I was taken to the Jefferson County Jail. I had to pay a cab fee to get back into Lake Mills to get my car. And I also had the trauma having to go to jail unnecessarily. And I can easily demonstrate that there were all kinds of irregularities in this arrest. I don't have time in three minutes to discuss them all. But if anyone, any single member willing, any single member of the council is willing to hear me or discuss me, I am willing to show that member what I have. I think the case would be conclusive. Now, the reason the council rejected, when the council rejected the June 4th meeting in 2019, they said I had the option of suing in state court. I mean, not state court, but county court, Jefferson County. That turned out to be incorrect. There was a statute of limitations, and the council might have ruled differently if they had known I did not have that option. So that information that they were using was definitely incorrect. There's a statute that limits to, you have to file within six months of the incident, which would have been during calendar 2018. So it already expired at the time of the City Council meeting.
Well, thank you.
The council was unaware of that, I think.
I think your time's about up, Mr. Quigley. Did you have a closing comment?
I just want to say that I was hurt by this incident. I hope to present all the evidence to any member of the council who's willing to hear it. I would appreciate it.
I set my video off.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other comments to council tonight? All right, see none, I'll close that portion of this portion of the meeting. And we'll move to the City Manager's report. Mr. Wilkie?
All I have tonight are the monthly voucher summary and the general fund check register. If there are any questions, I'll see if Sam can answer them, otherwise we're done.
Any questions? It's pretty straightforward, I guess. Thank you. All right, council member board reports and acceptance. We have Plan Commission minutes from November, excuse me, from April 26th, 2022. We have Lake Mills Housing Authority and Lake Mills Manor meeting on March 22nd, 2022, and Joint Rock Lake Committee meeting of April 14th, 2022. Any comments from council members on any of that? All right, see none, we'll accept those into our minutes and move forward. Council business. First thing on the agenda is the consent agenda for 2022. We'll take a motion to approve the whole slate. And then if there's any questions as we go through, we can address those questions. I'll take each section, I guess, quickly just to make sure there's any questions and we'll just do a hand vote. Does that make sense? Can we have a motion for the whole ball of wax?
I move to approve the 2022 consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quinnow. And I don't think there's any comment from staff on this. It's pretty straightforward. So item one, the liquor license applications. If there's no request to remove any of these, we'll just go ahead and move forward with a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. That's 5-0 in favor on item one. Item two is weights and major license applications. Anyone want to make any adjustments there? See none, all in favor, raise your hand. That's 5-0, that passes. Item three is cigarette license applications. Any requests to make any alterations there? See none, all in favor, raise your hand. That's 5-0, that passes. Item four, mobile home park license applications. Any requests to make any changes there? See none, all in favor, raise your hand. 5-0, that passes. Item five, sidewalk cafe license application. Any requests for changes there? What's that?
Cut his sound.
Can we cut sound on the video from outside? Some chirping noises.
I think he mutes everything if he does that. People online, if you're not participating, could you mute your mics?
Thank you. So item five, all those in favor, raise your hands. That's 5-0, that passes. Item six is private well operators license applications. Any changes there? See none, all in favor. That's 5-0, that passes as well. Moving on to item B. Discussion decision on 2002 sidewalk cafe license application and request for reduction slash waiver of fees Doyle Dogs. Can we have a, I guess there's not a motion here yet at this point. Can we suspend the rules and let Mr. Doyle come forward?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, second by Mrs. Bishop, all in favor, raise your hand. It's 5-0. The rules are suspended. Mr. Doyle?
What we're requesting is when we paid the fee last year in good faith, we then lost the street and sidewalk and didn't have the ability to use the permit last year. When I talked to Mr. Waters at that time, he said since it's already been paid, we would revisit this now and look for a waiver of those fees at that time. So what we're looking for is since we paid for it last year and could not utilize it, that we would waive the fee this year.
And part of the reason for the delay also was to understand how big the hardship was, how long it would.
It was the entire summer. It was seven months.
Okay.
Wasn't supposed to be that long, but they put the height of the sidewalk in wrong and then had to tear out the curb and redo that. So all said and done, we were seven months. And in this area, the bulk of the permit is used during the summer into the fall. Winter, we're not putting tables outside. So that's really the crux is when that is used is during those months.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion on this one. Motion to waive the 2022 sidewalk cafe license application for Doyle's Dogs for construction hardship this past year.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Could I just ask one question? Is that a motion to grant the 2022 license and waive the fees?
Correct.
I'll second.
So motion by Mr. Waters, second by Mr. Fields. We're open for discussion. Any comments?
A question, Mr. Doyle. Is this at the Lake Street address of your business?
Correct.
And I just wanted to note the current application for this year doesn't have your business address on it, so I'm just wondering if we can make sure that we get that for the record.
It is. 109 West Lake Street.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, see none, let's move to.
I would actually, I would just like to make one other comment.
Thank you.
I think it would have probably been more appropriate to refund you last year and then have you pay this year, but I think the math comes out the same either way. So I don't have an objection to this process, but it seems like last year was when you really lost that opportunity.
Right, we were asked to wait and do it at this time.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Can we roll call vote, please?
Ms. Quaidow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
And thank you so much. As long as I have the mic, just to throw one other thing in, just if you would consider possibly for the sidewalk cafe because it licensed, it sounds like there may be others downtown that may be looking to do that, which I think if that happens, the whole city benefits from that. You may, if you would consider the possibility of the first year in waiving that fee so people can try it and put tables out and then decide that's a good thing for them, and then we get more participation of that downtown. And if more people are participating, businesses are participating, in the long run, the city benefits financially and aesthetically. So, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, item C on the agenda is Resolution 2227. Misty, can you read that resolution?
Resolution 2227, in appreciation of public service to the city.
Okay, I'll read it. I got it.
I'll go check with her.
Do we have technical difficulties?
I got it.
Can you hear me?
I'll go ahead and take it, just in case. Resolution 22-27, in appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills, Bradley Hosey. Whereas Bradley Hosey has worked for the city of Lake Mills Public Works Department for 26-plus years, and whereas Bradley Hosey worked as street semi-skilled laborer and Light and Water Utilities Lead Water Maintenance Operator, and whereas Bradley Hosey has been a gifted, astute, and model public works employee, and whereas Bradley Hosey has worked to influence and achieve goals that were important to the city of Lake Mills Public Works Department, and whereas Bradley Hosey has provided reliable and trustworthy service that has contributed to the betterment of Lake Mills. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby wish to express their appreciation and acknowledgement on behalf of the citizens of Lake Mills to commend Bradley Hosey for his devotion, passion, and public service given to the city of Lake Mills, resolved the seventh day of June 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-27, appreciating the public service of Bradley Hosey.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quinnow. City staff comments?
Brad has worked for us for a long time, known him as long as I've been here. We've appreciated his service. He was very dedicated. He had some family working here, Betsy. So it's been a joy to work with both of them, and I've appreciated him. Dwayne had the privilege of working with him quite a bit the last couple of years. You have anything you want to comment, Dwayne?
Sure. Brad was obviously a very conscientious, very skilled worker in both departments. He was very instrumental in the last couple of years in working with staff on the PSC reports and really bringing some of the water data to collection into betterment and a better stage than they were when he found it. So I want to just comment on, he transitioned from both the street department and the water department and really kind of took on both roles. And I want to wish him luck in the future and enjoy retirement and all the endeavors that he's approaching now. So thanks again, Brad.
He's going to continue to work too. Not for us, though.
Is he here tonight so we can embarrass him at all?
No, he's not here and he's not online.
Okay. All right.
Need to vote on it?
Yes, we do need to vote. Is there any other comments from council at all? All right. Can we have a quick roll call on that?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And congratulations and thank you, Brad, for all your work here at the city of Lake Mills and good luck with your future endeavors. All right, next on the agenda is a discussion on emergency medical services EMS. Mr. Wilkie?
As noted already, that we received a notice of termination from the Lake Mills EMS for December of this year. We are looking at options for continuing service. I gave you six options. Five were really options that we could move forward with. I provided the information on each of the services and background on EMS and fire. And primarily, the issue that I tried to deal with was staffing. Today, in the Milwaukee Journal, there was a pretty substantial article again on the fact that this type of staffing model doesn't work anymore. I've been able to provide you other examples of staffing issues in the region that are coming up because of the POC, POP models. And so what we tried to do is look at some of the models, and I made recommendations related to either two, two A, two B, or three as being options that I think are going to remain viable in the long term. There are some possibilities for four, but they're a little bit more difficult to work through. So I know that you've only had this for a couple of days, and we want to be able to have further conversations. So I'm going to, has anybody fully read them all?
I read the whole document once, but I think I need a couple more go-arounds on it.
Okay. We are going to look at having a meeting with the towns on, I think, the 16th? No, yeah, the 16th. And that's at 6:00 here. We'll meet like we do for work studies in the middle. I don't know that all the people from the towns will be here, but I'm pretty sure Tom will and Steve will. And, no? Okay. Okay. And we have Town of Astleton will be here. So we're going to try and get through discussing these issues with them as far as how it will work for us. Some important issues are changes in how the funding works. And I tried to go through some of that. The basic model looks at an expense level of about $760,000 annually, which is what we got from Lake Mills EMS. I ran our models, they're pretty similar. So we, in fact, they're almost exactly the same. There's now $5,000 worth of difference between the two. So it really depends on the revenue streams from the fees and the other, you know, like grant opportunities, donations, and other funds like the county. And so we'll need to work on that. One of the issues that I've been working with, with the Town of Lake Mills is to try and, and Greg, is to try and keep the county involved in this conversation. I've sent them several emails, and I have been relatively satisfied with their action. We did talk about going to referendum. There is, I think Catherine had brought up an issue about going in April. It looks like the school district is not going to go to a referendum in November, which would give us the opportunity to go if we need to. If the county participates, then we don't have to worry about that. It's a clean run. But if the county doesn't participate, then we'll probably need some level of additional revenue sources. Then we may want to talk about a broader referendum than just EMS, fire. So that may change the numbers. Based on what I have here, I've divided the costs up 80/20 based on the call ratios and the time spent, the utilization time spent per operation. So 80% would be funded by the EMS fund and 20% would be funded by the fire department. So there would be a little bit of a shift in there on how that works. The two models, two and three, have some differences in their staffing. One has an independent EMS department that utilizes the full-time firefighter EMSs, but also utilizes other people, other civilians, to fill in POP and POCs around those. And so the full-time, or the fire department, which is two, the fire-based EMS, also depends on POCs and POPs. I did want to note that in 2013, Lake Mills EMS had 31 EMTAs on their staff. This year, they have 11. Lake Mills Fire Department has two EMRs, 18 EMT basics, three EMTAs, and two paramedics. So we have the potential, along with anything else, you know, any other potential pickups between now and then to run either option relatively safely. The key is picking up those six additional full-time employees and how we're going to fund that. And both of those methods, the 20% from the fire department and the 80% from EMS, will have some cost to the towns. So that's why we invited them to participate in those conversations. The Lake Mills EMS proposal had around $39 per capita for the 23-year. The ones, the other ones that I proposed are in that same range. They're a little bit lower, but if you took away the county funds, they would be about the same or a little bit higher. So the overall need for additional funds needs to be discussed with the towns, and that's why we're having that meeting. I also want to be able to have a conversation with cities in the county. So as soon as we're done with the towns, I would like to meet with the other cities, municipalities, and have a conversation. and have a conversation with them, because I know that they're all under stress. Probably the only one that isn't right now is Fort Atkinson, but they just passed a referendum, so they're going to be looking at how to control their overall costs and having benefits from the county too. So I think that's important for us to bring into the conversation with them. At this point in time, I'm just bringing this up as informational. We're going to have this again on our agendas, like on the 16th and on the 21st, and depending on where we go from there, at least several more times before the end of the year. So are there any questions?
Go ahead, Steve.
Did you, for your option 6, did you have a bid or a offer from private?
I did not. I asked for one and I never got it.
Okay.
So I built the model on almost essentially running a business full-time with full-time staff.
For 2 ambulances, fully covered?
Yep.
Could you share them numbers with us so that we can take a look at them? What you gave us was the executive summary, there's no numbers to it.
Yep, I can do that.
I'd like to see the numbers, so we can go through the numbers and understand it.
I got them all. So they would have been, so each one is like 6 pages. So there's each, there are 5 of them. I didn't do the Lake Mills EMS one, because they provided one. But I did do the other ones, and I can provide those to you and how the calculations came out. But they, based on that, you'd have so much paper, you'd have a hard time getting through it, or at least information.
Yes. I don't know if this is a question you can answer, if it's more rhetorical, but I read the article in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and Mr. Fields and I were talking before the meeting, and it occurs to me that every community is in this situation, and many are going to be looking for full-time employees. And are there going to be enough skilled, full-time employees out there for us to staff up? It just makes me wonder if we're going to need to be assuming some level of transition, you know, gradual, I'm not saying specifically the gradual option that you've listed, but, you know, there may be challenges, I guess, staffing up right away.
I believe that there will be some staffing challenges right away. I believe that in the long run, though, that you're going to end up with a more stable operation, being able to rely on the firefighter EMTs to be here and working and responsive. But I, to a certain extent, I think you'll find that between the Lake Mills EMS and Lake Mills Fire, you'll get a substantial number of people who will apply for the job. And then I'm sure that we'll get some others that will come in. But I use the numbers that we were seeing from other communities. So like, I know Pleasant Prairie is advertising right now, Kenosha's advertising, multiple Milwaukee-area ones are advertising. We know Fort Atkinson's going full-time with more staff. We know that Whitewater is gearing up. Jefferson probably is. Steve knows that Johnson Creek got wiped out. So they're essentially starting over. So it's a situation of, we're going to have to come up with a method for getting full-time staff and keeping them here. A little bit of that is, also falls back on the traditional problem that we have, and that, you know, we're between Madison, Milwaukee. We train them up, and then they move to Connaught, Milwaukee, and Stoughton, and Fitchburg. But those are issues that we deal with on a regular basis. We're kind of that place that we try and capture them in a certain fashion, but some of them are just going to move on. But I think that we will be able to staff up. I think that you will be able to staff up in a reasonable amount of time. But that's something that we'll have to look at and evaluate. That's why 2B was relatively high, but I think we can get there.
On the Jefferson County Alliance, how would that work to improve our service and potentially the costs that are outlined already?
I'm assuming you mean the tax levy that Jefferson County would provide its funds with?
Yeah.
The state allows Jefferson County to levy for emergency services, which allows them either to run their own emergency services, or in the case that they've been discussing, and if you read their report, they talked about doing it more like the library, where they look at the amount of expenses we have, and then based on those types of expenses, they fund us a certain amount. So my anticipation was, and I built it in, depending on how the department was structured, that we would be receiving about $100,000 per year from the county. And that's, they provide us with about 120. If it's the same as the library model, they provide us with $126,000 a year for our library services, not including capital purchases. So based on that, if we were running at the same level on, you know, on a $500,000 operation versus a 760, $100,000 is probably pretty reasonable, might be more than that. But it's hard to know right now, so I was trying to be careful. Dan kept telling me to raise the expenses and lower the revenues, that's what I did. So ours aren't as high as what you see in some of the, in the Lake Mills EMS model. But when you get it, but that's what I was striving for, was to be as conservative as I could in the revenues and run the expenses. I know Todd came in and told me that a lot of the operational expenses would be halved, but I left them where they were, just because it was too hard to guess, and at this point in time, having a hard number was better than nothing.
If we're looking to go to referendum, what would be the timeline on something like that?
We'd have to be ready in August to hit the agenda, to hit the referendum in November.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Given that the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel has made it quite clear that there is a problem throughout the state, do we know if there are any potential legislation that could assist with funding of this kind of, this kind of problem?
They've been dealing with it quite a bit. I know that a lot of grants came out recently available to cities, so we've, some of that I've utilized. The change in the levy system for the county was an upgrade. They've been looking at legislation to, well, they've changed a lot in the operations requirements for EMS to be able to be more flexible. So you'll see, you know, like the flex proposal in there versus the EMTAs and those types of stuff. It allows for a little bit more flexibility. I'll go. A lot of research done in the last several years, and 25% of the calls are emergency medical calls. 75% are falling some other range. So it's like, what kind of actual response do you have to put out there on a regular basis? Can you start to monitor those different response requirements and have a different response level? The, about 11% of that 25% is calls that are, need high response time. So that 4- to 6-minute time is very important. So there's a different type of response, and some of it comes out of dispatch, which would be at the county level, that would help us make better decisions in how that works. So when I went into the, towards the recommendations portion, I talked a lot about there's, the unit utilization for equipment is pretty low. Ambulance is like 20%, and normal would be 40. Fire department should be 10 to 15, 20. We're at like 5. But the staffing is so difficult to keep up on those, that the staffing, there are some people here who are working, Tom Murphy works all the frickin' time. And he's not a young man anymore. And there are several people like that on that service. And we need to be able to supplement that in the staffing area, more than we do in the equipment area. And so we really need to concentrate on being able to put a certain, at least a certain number of people in place from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, if not more regular than that. So as you start to work through this, and you get your concepts about what's important to the community, and how you're going to utilize the equipment in a connection with the staff, I think the staff is singularly the most important issue that we're going to deal with here. And how to put that in place and keep it operational, and meet the demands of the community is the most important situation that we deal with. So at no time have I ever suggested that we drop from EMTAs down. I've always said that EMTAs would be our primary goal. As we ramp up, it may take a little bit of time, but that depends on how things go with personnel and those types of operations. I don't believe that you need to have EMTAs at every single event. Nor do I believe that you need to have 2 EMTs at every single event. It's just like paramedics. Do you need paramedics all the time? I think Steve will tell you, and I think Todd will tell you, and most of the people in the county will say, you do not need paramedics at every single event. There are times when you need paramedics, and there are certain agencies that we have agreements with that they can respond. So it's how you level up that response in connection with your staff to be able to meet the needs of the community at the highest level. Because there are going to be a certain amount of people. I'm a high-risk. Both my mom and my dad and my grandparents all had heart attacks and strokes. So I'm going to want an ambulance there relatively quickly. Not everybody's going to have that type of need and response. There are some young people who get kicked in the shin and have a broken leg, and they can lay there for a while while the ambulance shows up. But those are different types of issues and different types of response levels that we should be able to work through. And there is a lot of federal legislation on this type of conversation about, you know, what can be done on-site by the paramedics, or the, what needs to be hauled in, what level of response do you need initially? There's some discussion that was, it was better for the police officer to grab you and throw you in the car and haul you than it is to wait that extra 5 minutes for the ambulance to show up, depending on what the condition is. So you've got all these different conditions out there that are problematic, and if we can get those worked through, we can make a better staff workforce. But at this point in time, the rosters are, for both agencies, are getting thin, and particularly during the daytime. And I think it's absolutely critical for us to consider seriously how we're going to deal with that. And I think the best option is to have full-time staff under one of those options.
Any other questions? All right. So it looks like at June 16th will be the next go-round discussion on this, and then it'll be at the following council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure council meeting's after that.
21st.
Well, if we want to hit an August deadline for a November referendum, it's got to move pretty quickly here, so.
Well, I'm hoping that we have better luck with the county.
Okay.
I think that's our best option right now.
With the county? All right.
Yeah, we have, we have several county, we have several town members here, and I know that there are several city and village people that we can count on to work on them. And all of you know your county board representatives. Great opportunity to take advantage of being able to say, hey, this isn't the best interest of Jefferson County, not just the city of Lake Mills.
All right. Any other thoughts? And on that note, we'll move on. Thank you. Steve, thanks for putting that memo together. That's a pretty extensive memo, and it's great to have that put together in that type of format. And I'm sure we'll get some good community feedback as they, everybody takes a look at it, so. So thank you. Item E is Resolution 22-28. Can we get a reading of that?
Resolution 22-28, resolution of the City Council, the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, accepting the 2021 financial statement as presented by the external audit firm. Whereas the City of Lake Mills is required to complete an annual audit, the city's financial statements, and whereas the goal of an audit is to promote public trust and advance accountability by providing independent, objective, and useful financial information. And whereas the audit firm of Hawkins Ash CPAs has completed its audit with the City of Lake Mills financial statements, and whereas in the opinion of Hawkins Ash CPAs, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the great remaining fund information of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as of December 31, 2021, and the respective changes in financial position, and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And whereas the audit report has been presented to the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills. Number 1, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills hereby accepts the fiscal year 2021 audited financial statements as presented by Hawkins Ash CPAs as provided to the City Treasurer, Finance Director. Number 2, the City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign the resolution for approval.
Thank you. All right, can we have a resolution, or a motion for Resolution 22-28?
I move to accept Resolution 22-28. Resolution of City Council, the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, accepting the 2021 audited financial statement as presented by the external audit firm. Second?
Second? Motion by Ms. Quinnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. City staff comment?
Now, the city is required to do an annual audit. This year was a little bit more, because we hit the federal requirements. So our firm, Hawkins Ash, BAPD, has provided that, and they are here, ready to present. Chuck Krieger is our auditor. Do you want to say anything, Sam?
No, I don't have anything to say.
Chuck, you ready?
I'm ready. Okay. I'm assuming you are in possession of either a hard copy or there's one up on the screen?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I will be looking at the summary financial report, not the longer document, but this is about a 12-page one.
Correct.
Okay. So Steve dated himself a little bit. He mentioned Hawkins Ash, BAPD and Company. We dropped a BAPD a few years back, but all's forgiven, Steve. Okay. I guess for starters...
Dave, can we get a little higher sound for Chuck? It's a little hard to hear. Thanks. Sorry.
Keep going, Chuck.
Okay. For starters, I'm looking at, I'll start with the independent auditor's report. Okay, that's on page 2 or page 3 of the PDF. Just a couple of things to note on there. Now, your resolution mentioned it's in all material respects. The only thing I'm going to mention is this auditor's report here, and the one that's in the full document, they changed the format this year. It used to be you had some of the information about responsibility of management, auditor responsibility, that type of thing, to start the document, and then the opinion came after that. They realized that the opinion is really what people are looking for, so they decided to put the opinion first, and then delineate the, some of the responsibility of the various parties after that. So a little change in format. When you look at the entire opinion in the larger document... there are some bullet points in there and some other information that's more expansive than it was in the past. But be aware that an audit always encompassed that information, um, when we perform the audit. But now we're telling you about it in the document, okay? It was always part of our audit procedures to, uh, do stuff like, uh, be aware of, uh, going concern and, uh, risks and that type of thing. Always part of our planning and a, and a, uh, execution of the audit, but now they're putting it out in the, in the report for you. So if we're gonna flip to, uh, page four of the, uh, financial or page five of the PDF, this is the combined balance sheets, uh, assets, liabilities and your equity section. Uh, just a couple of comments on, on this area. You know, your cash investment's fairly similar to what it was last year. The cash typically varies with, uh, when you run your, uh, accounts payable checks and how your tax collections come in before the end of the year. Okay, if more people pay in December, you're going to see a little more cash and a little less receivables. Uh, please note the restricted cash, it's called restricted assets, cash investments. Uh, that typically includes stuff like, um, uh, restricted utility cash for depreciation and equipment reserves and, and that type of thing. It also includes the unspent bond proceeds. Typically you get bond proceeds in one year and you spend it over the course of generally, uh, one to three years. So that's, some of that is in the restricted cash area. Other items of note, the receivables, uh, taxes receivable are up some. Again, that kind of fluctuates with the cash that comes in. Uh, your accounts receivable down a little bit, but the accounts receivable typically are mostly utility billings. Please note that last year, um, in 2020, you'd paid off a, you know, revolving loan fund was, was paid off in full, the final balance that you had there. And that had, um, had some increase in cash then. This year you ended up repaying that money to the state and so it brought your cash back down in, in that area. And we're talking, in that instance, it was probably about a half a million dollars, so it's, it's not insignificant. Fixed assets, uh, some increase in fixed assets, you know, you guys are always, always working on something down there, whether it be in the utilities or in the, um, uh, in the, in the city operations, uh, streets, infrastructure. You know, you've got a lot of development going on, so that's, the fixed assets go up every year. If your fixed asset activity, you know, hard assets exceeds the amount of depreciation on those assets. And that's what happened in, in 2021. Advances, uh, we're looking about, um, just before the total assets line, a, a couple lines up from that, the advances. Those are advances that you have to the, uh, TIF districts, the TIDS. And that varies just with the activity between them. Number, uh, TID number two was closed out during 2021. Uh, but of course you've got more activity ramping up in some of the other ones, so it's, uh, one kind of falls off and, and, uh, five, six, seven and eight start ramping up in, in business, so. The excess increment, uh, in TID two was distributed to the underlying taxing jurisdictions. So, you know, TID two was a successful district. You end up having, uh, uh, excess funds at the end. And it goes, uh, it goes back to the, uh, the city gets some, the county gets some, the, uh, technical school gets some and then the school district. So, and that gets all distributed, that was all taken care of, uh, by the end of December of 2021. Switching to the liability set, well, I guess I kind of flipped over the, um, the Wisconsin retirement system, that pension and the deferred outflows, uh, information. Uh, as you're all aware, you are a member of the Wisconsin retirement system, um, for retirement and you also have a, uh, a life insurance retirement obligation there. Though, as I've said in the past, there's amounts for the Wisconsin retirement system, whether it be the, uh, pension or the, uh, life insurance program. Even though there's assets listed, there's not something you can go out and spend. It's just based on, on the actuarial studies that are done at the state level. And they let us know how much of it belongs, quote unquote, to, uh, the city of Lake Mills. And based on markets, it goes up one year, goes down the next. Uh, so it's not something you can really put your hands on. And you really have no control over the numbers. You can see it did go up in the last year, but based on what the markets are doing so far this year, it may, uh, you may see a drop in it at the end of 2022. Moving on to the liability section, uh, you know, your long-term debt is, is, um, pretty close to what it was in total last year to this year. Again, what you've typically done is, uh, a cou- a couple of things when you take out debt. Uh, you normally have fairly aggressive paybacks, um, 20 years of less. And, you know, your, your debt that you pay off, at least recently, what you've paid off in one year is kind of offset by what you might have taken out in, in the next, in the coming year. So you don't see a, a big increase or decrease typically. But like I said, you, you have fairly rapid payoffs. You know, I've got some smaller municipalities that, uh, I have taken out, let's say, some sewer and water debt. They've gone through a state program and they have 40-year obligations out there, okay? Uh, you typically don't have anything much over 20, in, in some instances maybe, but typically 20 or less is, is your uh, horizon for, uh, for debt, whether it be in the utility or in the city. And that's, uh, you know, you're, you're able to service that debt, so it, it's a good thing. Uh, other items to note, and then when you get down to the, um, again, there's some deferred inflows, uh, kind of offsets some of the outflows up above. The only bigger than those are the taxes levied for next year. And you'll see there's a big jump in that. It really, it's just a, a change in how they required us to report it. Okay, uh, it's reported differently in 2021 than it was in 2020. Equity section, um, you had some, uh, net position in utility went up about, uh, about $2 million. Again, the utility is, um, it's mostly based on fixed asset, uh, activity and operating profit, if you will. The general fund was, was, I guess, closer to break even. But again, overall, your, your equity is up from, uh, the net position is up about, uh, $2 million from last year. And general fund is up, uh, a couple hundred thousand. You'll see the other funds are, are down. Again, that's, uh, uh, some of that is based on the, uh, the changes to the tax levy up above. Okay, if you're gonna flip, uh, one more, now this is a, the, the next page is a, uh, pie chart that shows breakdown of your revenues. If, uh, you know, visually you can see public charges for services is the, is the biggest number. And that's your, um, your utility charges, you know, uh, electric, water and sewer. You know, given the size of your municipality, you're probably one of the smaller municipalities that has its own electric utility. But you realize, you know, of that 12 million, uh, probably, uh, 7 million or so is, is electric revenue. Uh, I guess if you flip the, flip page where the numbers are, it's more like 8 million this year. I guess items to note there, um, uh, property taxes up a little bit. Uh, if you kind of go down, fly by the column one to the other, uh, if you go about a third of the way down, there's an other grants number. Went from about 550,000 up to 1.2 million. You had, uh, some grants for, um, uh, conservation and development. You, uh, I'm thinking, let's see, boat launch, lead service lines, some of that type of thing. You had some, both federal and state grants on, on some of that, um, in, in that category there. This year that you did not have in the past. And they're kind of a one-shot deal, so I would expect next year to, it would kind of fall back to normal. I'm moving down everything else.
So is that ARPA funds, for instance?
No, the, the ARPA funds, uh, any ARPA funds that you spent last year would be recognized in the revenue here. But if you did not spend them, we would have deferred them to a, uh, a deferred revenue so that when you do spend them, the revenue matches up with the, with the expense.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, though. Looking down, um, you know, if you go down, uh, contributions from developers, it's near the bottom there. Uh, again, you've got a lot of development going on and the, uh, infrastructure and stuff that you put in from a utility perspective, uh, the developers, you may, um, they, they pay for some of the assets themselves. And this is the value of what they have paid. They either paid in cash or it's basically a asset that's contributed to the utility. So that's why it's, uh, contributions from developers. And then the, the last item there, you'll see there's a, a transfer in and it's, it's up, I don't know, about 600, uh, I'm sorry, about 400,000. As I mentioned earlier, you had closed out your TID number two. And when you closed it, there was a, the, uh, tax increment for 2021 was known. And you got an extension on the useful life of that TID, but it was required that you take that increment and you contributed to a, um, affordable housing fund. Okay, so you guys set up an affordable housing fund and I think there's probably on 450,000 went into that. You know, you, you talked earlier about the scarcity of, um, of staff for EMS and what have you. Uh, affordable housing is also in short supply, uh, all over the place. Um, you're not, uh, you know, I had, um, a, a La Crosse office does a audit for the city of La Crosse. And they had a TIF close out last year, uh, in 2020, they did the same thing. Uh, they put it all toward affordable housing. So it's, uh, it's something that, that needs addressing, um, and, you know, you're taking a, a step in that right direction there. So if you flip the page, the next one is a pie chart on the expenditure side. And again, you know, the, uh, uh, charges with services was the utilities. Here the public works kind of gets, the utilities and the regular public works kind of gets lumped together here. So again, you can see 47% of your expenditures are, are in the public works area and, and that's what you would expect, given the, um, uh, given the revenue side of it. If you flip to the number area, um, expenditures up last year, capital outlay was up. You know, as I'd mentioned earlier, a lot of times you'll get bond revenue in one year and expenditures over several years and, and that typically is what happened, uh, some of that this year. So your capital outlay is up this year, even though you didn't borrow all of it. Some of it was borrowed last year and you're just spending those numbers, those items down. Items to note here in the, um, um, I'm just trying to look for it. Okay, about, uh, two-thirds of the way down on the conservation and development. Community and economic development went from 41,000 up to 534. That 534, the bulk of that was that payment of the revolving loan fund back to the state of Wisconsin, Department of Administration. And again, you're not, you're not alone in the, uh, getting out of the loan business, uh, from a revolving loan stand- standpoint. And the, you know, the state requires that either you, you loan money out and keep that thing going or you turn the money back into them and they administer some of those on a statewide basis. So, uh, you, you made a, a decision to discontinue the loan fund and have we turn those funds to the state. And that's why the big jump of almost 500,000 there. Other items are not, um, capital outlay, uh, you'll see under the public safety. Uh, in 2020, you had a purchase of a, uh, a fire truck. And in 2021, you did not have that, so that again is what, what the big jump is there. And other than that, I, I think your, your numbers, uh, culture, recreation, education, that's your boat launch. We, we mentioned about the revenue being up in the capital grant area. And this is kind of the offset with the expenses here. Other than those few items, everything pretty much status quo there. You know, your next page, uh, page 10 of the PDF, uh, shows the, uh, position of the equity uh, between late, uh, sewer, water, general fund, other. Now, the general fund is, is, you're, you're in good shape there. And the other funds, they typically will go up and down because you do have a lot of TIF activity. You've got, you do a lot in the area of special assessments. And so sometimes you have expense in that and you haven't, uh, sent out the, uh, notices for the specials yet. So one year you might have more expense, the, uh, the, uh, fund balance will drop. And then when you send out and collect some of those specials, the next year it, it comes back up. So I can see that 19 was kind of a low point, but it, it has inched up the last couple of years. And that's all, uh, TIF and special assessments typically. Uh, page seven shows a breakdown just in the, uh, all the different funds that you have. And, and you've got a fair amount of funds for, uh, for the city of size. You know, you've got a lot of TIF activity there. Enterprise funds that I mentioned earlier, that's the, uh, utilities. And, um, special revenues, you've got the upper federal revenue fund. Again, you can see the, the, the balance there of $237, that's the interest that you made on the funds last year. But the affordable housing fund also separate. And you set up a donation fund, because some of this, uh, will affect how your, uh, expenditure restraint goes. Uh, so splitting it out and taking it out of your normal general fund makes some sense. And the last page of this report, just some, uh, snippets of other information here. You know, we talked about the independent audits report. You do get a clean opinion, it's the best opinion you can get. I mentioned a new format, um, but again, it's the same, um, opinion. You've gotten a clean opinion every year I've, I've been on the audit. Fixed assets, we talked, touched on, long-term debt, we touched on, and the fund equity. We have some additional reports that we issue as part of our audit. Most of those are pretty much standard verbiage, um, for what, any findings we might have had or communications with, with the council. Uh, it's those charged with government, but it's a, a lot of it is boilerplate language. So, um, I know I went through it kind of fast, so, um, I mean, I guess if you've got any questions now, I can, I can take those. If it's, uh, something like Steve's memo and you have to, uh, sleep on it a bit, uh, certainly feel free to do that and, and, um, have, uh, Sam contact me with questions. So I'm open to questions at this point.
Any questions for Chuck? So Chuck, um, in the business world, boards that I'm on, what we end up doing at the end of a session like this is we, we ask the, uh, the officers from the corporation to, to leave the room and then the board's able to ask questions and, and get some feedback about maybe red flags or things that, that, that the council should be aware of for the future. If there's something like that, I know we're in an open session right now, we shouldn't probably talk about that. But can you send me a memo, Greg Waters, I have my city address and I'll share it with the other council members?
Uh, certainly we, we can. I, I, I guess if you, if you're looking for something at this point, uh, you know, there is a, another report that we issue. I'm just looking for my copy over here. It is called, uh, Independent Audit Report on Communications with Those Charged with Governance and Management Advisory Comments. Okay?
Okay.
So this report, uh, does give any, uh, you know, it might talk about findings we've had, uh, risks that we've had, um, you know, difficulties in performing the audit. Some of that is standard verbiage. Um, it shows, uh, adjusting journal entries. And the, um, and you actually have, uh, reports at the back of the larger document that talk about compliance findings and that type of thing too, okay? So from a, what are we, we require to report, uh, some of the stuff is listed, um, way back on page 62 of the, of the main document. It starts there, uh, the only items that we have that have been reported for some time are the, uh, corporation of financial statements. Uh, and that, every one of my clients gets that finding. And it's just because the, the, the people who, uh, And it's just because the the people who work for the city to stay up on all the ins and outs of financial reporting would take considerable time on their part and some expense, and they, you know, their efforts would benefit the city. Whereas I take time to keep up on that and some expense, but my knowledge can get spread all amongst all my clients. Okay, so even though I I have to do the same kind of training that your staff might have to for financial reporting purposes, the cost to any one of my clients is actually minimal. So that one has been there for some time. You've got a item on material audit adjustments. You know, one of the reasons you have some of those adjustments is your fixed asset work, and I and I think Dwayne can attest to this, the fixed asset work in the utility. You know, the utility bookkeeper does a good job on on keeping track of expenses and and booking information and just, you know, the day-to-day stuff. But when you get to the fixed asset area, some of that is not resolved until we are down there for fieldwork. And at that point, then we make the, we make the adjustments, and we discuss a lot of this with Dwayne and or, well, it was Betsy, it will be Sam in the future. So there's work that's done there that I don't know that it would be completed before we actually get on site and start an audit. Just, that's the nature of the beast. Dwayne, any comment on that?
Yeah, we can for sure take a look at the adjustment entries and and dig into that if we need to, but if there's any other comments, please forward those to me, I'd appreciate that.
I I certainly will. I, and I guess just in closing, from my perspective, you know, Betsy was was good to work with, she's always willing to learn, take suggestions, all that kind of stuff. From my initial interaction with Sam, I don't think it's going to be any different with her. She's she's very open to suggestions. She calls calls me with questions, which I I much prefer she call me before she does something, as opposed to taking a shot at it and then having to try and clean it up later on. Okay? So I mean, I, we really like working with the staff down there. Steve, we're going to miss you down the road, but I'm sure you guys will make a good hire as you go along, and and the city will remain in good hands.
All right. Anything else for Chuck? All right, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for going over that with us.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? So we have a resolution twenty-two twenty-eight that is moved for acceptance. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Thank you.
This is five zero, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is a resolution twenty-two twenty-nine, which is the safe drinking water. Can you please read that?
Resolution two-two dash two-nine, resolution authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal For Given Financial Assistance Agreement.
All right, can we have a motion for acceptance?
I move to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty-nine, Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, Led Service Line Principal For Given Financial Assistance Agreement.
A second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff comment?
This is the loan that we, actually, it's a grant, ends up being forgiven, but for the led lateral service work that's done for private property, doesn't actually cover our expenses, but it does cover a certain percentage, seventy-five percent of the private costs. People have to apply, they go through specific vendors to be able to qualify. This year, we received one hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, and we hope to be able to put it all to use. We came pretty close last year with our three hundred thousand dollars, and we're hoping to continue that moving forward. I, too, thought it should be forgiveness, but the one that they sent us said forgiven. So I stuck with what they gave us. So I kept reading it, thinking I was thinking wrong.
All right, any questions? All right, seeing none, let's move forward with the roll call vote. Thank you.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you.
Thank you. Item, next on the agenda is item G, resolution twenty-two dash thirty. Can you read that, please?
Resolution number twenty-two dash thirty, resolution awarding the sale of one thousand four hundred, I'm sorry, one million four hundred and sixty thousand general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty twenty-two A.
Can we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty-two dash thirty, which is a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bond, series twenty twenty-two A.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
We have John Cameron from Ellers here tonight to do the presentation and provide the information on the sale that occurred today for our bonds. So, John?
Great, thanks, Steve.
Do we need to suspend the rules?
Oh, no.
He's unemployed.
Nope. You're free to go, John, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. We took bids at nine-thirty this morning on the general obligation bonds. We received a total of five bids, which is really a a good number to have. We're looking for at least three bids. The winning bidder was BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee with a true interest cost of three point three nine six three percent. The difference between the low and the high bid in terms of total interest cost over the life of the debt was about fifty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. So fairly tight bids, but still a good spread between the low and the high. The other item I'll point out is that in terms of going through the debt issuance process, we did go through a rating call with Standard and Poor's, and I'm pleased to say that the city's rating at double A minus was affirmed. So congratulations to the city and really congratulations to city staff. There's a fair amount of information that goes into preparing the official statement as well as that goes into preparing and going through the rating call with Standard and Poor's. So it's no small lift to get all the way from start to finish. So we really appreciate the efforts of city staff. In total, you saw that the issue was able to be downsized by twenty-five thousand. It's primarily due to lower issuance-related expenses compared to the pre-sale estimate, as well as a premium that was received by the winning underwriter that we were used to downsize the debt. We were also able to deposit about thirty-nine thousand dollars, a little over that, into the debt service fund to offset the interest, partially offset the interest payment in two thousand and twenty-three, so another positive there. In total, the interest expense over the life of the debt is a little higher than what we had from the pre-sale estimate. So in total, over the life of the the bonds, the total principal and interest payments are about eighteen thousand dollars lower than what we showed the common council last month. So the only other thing that I'll note in the sale day packet that I had passed out on the very last page, you see a one-year trend in municipal bond rates, and this is at a double A level, so very comparable to where the city is. And if you look at the far right, what you'll notice is that over the last, really, two weeks and primarily last week, there was a fairly substantial drop in interest rates, about forty basis points, which is fairly significant. So, you know, we, in terms of timing, that was really to the city's benefit in terms of seeing that drop in, drop in rates, because prior to that, rates have obviously, week over week, been going up quite substantially since the first part of the year. So congratulations on a, on a very successful sale.
Is there any questions for John? All right, thank you. So we have a resolution twenty-two dash thirty for us. Any other additional comments or questions?
I just have a question on the documentation. So when this is originally put on the agenda, the sale hadn't occurred yet, and so we had draft documents. Does the final resolution get posted onto the agenda so that the community can see that final? What's our normal procedure on that?
We can, we haven't, because it it came in at about, what, two o'clock today?
Yeah.
So, and normally, the agenda is finalized on on the date. So there, we could post it on the front page of the website, but I don't think it would be of value to put it on the agenda.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I do.
Yes.
And maybe this is a question for you, sir, if you don't mind coming back up. This is the, one of the first times I've dealt with a bid tabulation, so bear with my nature.
Sure.
Just curious about the rate, noticing that there are several years where it's at three point five percent. Why in the last four years does it go up to four?
So the underwriter, when they bid, they bid by each each maturity. So when they submit their bid form, they're bidding on the interest rate for each maturity. So it's quite common to start lower and go higher over over time. So bonds, in terms of, as they're evaluated, they're evaluated based on their true interest costs, and that takes into consideration the time value of money. So for for underwriters, it pays to go lower with the first maturities and and get higher as you go. The other thing that you'll note is that there is a call feature with this debt, so those four percent coupons, it's quite possible that as we get out there, if we get back to a lower interest rate environment, you always have the option to call the debt at that point and and refinance it for lower interest rates if 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 it's warranted.
Thank you. I was wondering if there would be a refinancing, I mean, obviously, bearing the interest rate and whether or not that would be going down in the future, but thank you.
We hope.
Yeah.
Every year, we evaluate the callable.
Did you say every year?
Yeah, every year, we evaluate the callable bonds to see if there is value. Now, this year, originally, we were looking at refinancing some bonds, and then the interest rate started to go up, and it didn't become viable. But we had, we had a number of bonds, so every year, we go through and we evaluate that, and that comes in with the recommendation, generally, when we're looking at new debt, as to what should be refinanced if there's enough savings there to make it worthwhile.
So with the trend appearing to go in the down pattern, would it, would it be advantageous of us to consider re-
I don't think at this, I don't think at this point it would have to, it would have to stay down.
Okay.
It's a short-term down right now.
Is it?
About to go back up.
Yeah, and it's, it's not down far enough yet. You know, when you looked at where it was at the beginning of the year versus where it is even now, I don't know that we would, we wouldn't save enough money to make it worthwhile. But we evaluate it, and we'll come back next year. Based on the information I'm hearing, I don't have a lot of hope for next year either, but but over the span of the twenty years of the bonds, it can change multiple times. So it's, it's worth making sure that that everybody has evaluated it and keeps on top of it.
Okay, thank you both.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, let's move to a roll call on resolution twenty-two dash thirty.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Motion passes four one, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item H, resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one. Can you read that resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one, authorization to borrow funds, TID number
Thank you, Lori. Can we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one, authorization to borrow funds for TID number five.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Ms. Quidnow. Staff comment?
This is for TIDS five and eight, and it's part of the developers' agreements where we agreed to pay certain amounts of funds at certain points in the phases. And so we went through the bank of like mills to borrow that lower amount of money. And so it's consistent with what's been approved by the council in the developer agreements.
All right, any questions or comment? Yes.
I have a question. I had looked back through the twenty twenty-two budget, and it looked like we had budgeted three hundred thousand for TID five. So did you just say that some of this is for TID eight as well, then? And so that's for the Terranina development downtown here? Okay, so three hundred thousand is for TID five and the balance is for TID eight? For documenting purposes, would it be important to have TID number eight identified on here and the other developer, just so the resolution is is complete?
That's, that's up to you. We've never, we've never done it before, but that's up to you.
No, they should at least identify the specific kids. There are specific expenses in all the specific kids.
To further that point, should we differentiate between the amounts on the different TIDS?
I think identifying the TIDS is like number one, and then allocating funds that are payable through each kid is probably, yes, appropriate.
Would it be more appropriate to have two separate resolutions, then?
Yeah, perhaps.
I move to table this until the next meeting, which is January twenty, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two?
All right, a motion to table by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow, and that is to the next meeting of June twenty-first, correct?
Do we need to vote on that, or?
Yes, we will.
Oh, okay, let me just check, sorry.
Is there any discussion on the table, the item?
I'd just like to see two separate resolutions with each TID listed and then the respective amount. And I'd also like some background on how much we still would need to borrow for each TID to meet our obligations under those respective development agreements.
Is there, is there any backlash to holding off for for two weeks? No? Okay. Any other discussion? All right, so this is a vote to accept the the tabled item for resolution twenty-two dash thirty-one. So a vote on the tabled item, can we have a roll call? So, a vote on the tabled item, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Quiddow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right. So, it's been tabled to the next meeting. We can move forward to the next item on the agenda, which is item I, which is the ordinance 1234, which is a second reading. Can we have that reading, Lori?
Ordinance 1234, an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 018-0713-1214-002.
All right, so that was the second reading of ordinance 1234. I will have the last reading at our next meeting. Is there any questions or comment on ordinance 1234 at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is ordinance 1235. This is the first reading for that. Lori, can you read ordinance 1235?
Ordinance 1235, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 246-0714-1822-007. Owner, James W. Schmidt, 923 East Lake Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. The city council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section 1, City of Lake Mills ordinance section 660-44, per an, eight per an, the official zoning ordinance and map of the City of Lake Mills are hereby amended to zone the following described, .52 acres identified by parcel identification number 246-0714-1822-007, and address 923 East Lake Street, from rural development, RD, to single-family residence, residential, R1-4, and depicted in the attached map, which is incorporated herein. Section 2, all ordinance or parts of ordinance inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
Thank you, Lori. That was the first reading of ordinance 1235. So, we'll have our second reading at the next, our next meeting. Is there any questions or comments at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is ordinance 1236. This will be the first reading of this ordinance. I hope you're okay here, Lori. Let's, let's continue on with ordinance 1236.
Ordinance 1236, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map, part of 1349 Topol Street, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, part of parcel number 246-0713-2312-022. The city council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does here, or date, ordain, does ordain as follows. Section 1, pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 66.1001, per an, four per an, the City of Lake Mills is authorized to amend its comprehensive plan, which was adopted on February 17, 2009. Section 2, the plan commission held a public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan amendment on May 24, 2022, and recommended approval of the amendment to the city council. Section 3, the amendment to the comprehensive plan is to the future land use map, and the property affected by the amendment is part of parcel number 246-0713-2312-022. Section 4, this ordinance modifies future land use map of the subject property by amending from planned neighborhood to general industrial in accordance with the rezoning of the subject parcel from multifamily residential, R312, to planned industrial, PI, with planned development district, PDD, overlay. The proposed and current land use maps of the subject property are attached to this ordinance and incorporated herein, with the proposed land use map being adopted as an amendment to future land use through enactment of this ordinance. Section 7, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as required by law.
Good job, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. So, that was the first reading of ordinance 1236. I noticed as you're reading that it goes from section 5 to section 7. Do we need a section 6?
I think we'll change section 7 to section 6 in the second reading.
All right.
Put an amendment on the ordinance, identify it as 1236A, and make that one change.
Could, could we consider moving to the third reading tonight with that amendment? I know that, that the next two items go along with that, and I'm sure the petitioners, I know John's online, and some of his people are here tonight, and they would probably appreciate that unless there's any significant issues that you guys see. I'm sure that they'd appreciate being able to have all three of those on their hands tonight. They have equipment coming.
Can that be done in one motion, then, correction and waiving? I'll make a motion to amend ordinance 1236, to change the numbering on section 7 to read section 6. And I will also move to waive the second reading and proceed to the third reading.
The second? Both motions?
So, motion to move to the third reading and with the amend, amended section 6 from Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff comment? Any further comment?
I know that it was discussed at plan commission, and plan commission approved, recommended all three to the city council. The, if you have any detailed questions about the memo, Dustin Wolf is online to be able to comment on them. But it's pretty much a substantial improvement, in our opinion, on what's at the site now, and I think it'll make it work better for everybody that's involved, users and the owners and the cities, residents.
Dustin, considering that we're moving on to the third reading tonight, and we probably weren't ready to consider that, can you give us a little bit of background here to bring it up to speed?
Certainly. The, the, the owners are making some improvements, and in part of making those improvements, they've acquired some land to the south. To facilitate those improvements being made, there's a rezoning going along with it to address some, some historical kind of deficiencies with the site. They're pretty limited on the width of the site, and to address the, the proposed land that they're acquiring. So, land they're acquiring is from the farm field to the south owned by the Topols, and they, that land is actually zoned for multifamily development, oddly enough. It is also in the future land use for planned neighborhood. Well, this is going to be planned industrial. So, the order of operations is we do need to make a decision on the land use. Then, if the land use is approved, going to planned industrial, then, following suit, can be the rezoning to accommodate the development improvements they are proposing.
All right, is there any questions for Dustin? I'm just quickly cramming the information real quick here.
Okay, I'll ask a question while you're doing that, how about?
Thank you.
Dustin, so I have a question, and this might be more applicable to the next item, but since they're all together, can you just clarify for all of us, so the planned, PPD, what is, or, planned development district?
The-
That overlay, is the concept with that overlay that it allows some less, you know, some lesser restrictions to what the ordinance requires, but also maybe has some greater restrictions to kind of, you know, for a case by, on a case-by-case basis for a property? Can you just clarify what the purpose of that overlay is?
Certainly. In this case, if, if you've looked at the aerials that were included in some of the memos, it is a very narrow, but very long property. Obviously, all of the improvements are really kind of centered on the, on the, on the property. The equipment or vehicles at harvest time circle the property. The property right now has paved parking at the far east end for the office. The remainder of the site is, like, crushed aggregate. It doesn't meet the city's requirement for hard surfacing, asphalt or concrete. They are proposing to install asphalt in that area around the existing buildings and the area that they're proposing some, some new equipment. We have some code requirements that specify minimum setbacks for pavement from, from property lines. And because of the existing improvements on the site and the minimum width they need for access drive around that equipment, they can't meet the minimum setback from the side property lines. So, they can get to about 5 feet on each side, and that's the minimum that Public Works has said that they are comfortable with to ensure that there can be areas for runoff to collect and be directed without going on to the neighboring property. So, one of the, when you ask about, is it making lesser requirements? Well, they are trying to make improvements in keeping with our code requirements, but because of the width, they can't meet certain requirement, minimum requirements, and still function safely and appropriately for their operations. So, the lesser requirement is, well, the plan commission has said, yes, we will allow you to go to 5-foot setbacks for that paved surface. But they still have to have screening and, and, and meet some stormwater requirements, et cetera. So, to enable that, the planned development district really is the only tool we had available to facilitate that, those improvements that they want to make, and try to be consistent with the intent of the code.
And maybe if I could just ask a follow-up, so it, it avoids the need for a variance to those setbacks and other kinds of things, and instead, basically says, this is okay to do this within this, I don't know, I guess I just call it sort of like, it's a case-by-case situation where for this particular property, given their unique needs, it's a way to accommodate that, but still, like-
That is-
Be in keeping with the ordinance.
That is, is correct. It is felt that is of a benefit to neighboring properties and the community as a whole, that there will be paved surface where there was none previously, that dustless surface will, especially when they are in there because, you know, harvest times, will be valued by everyone. Improvements for stormwater management, improvements for screening, which they have proposed and were approved by the plan commission, was felt was, was good public benefit. But we are just kind of, have a challenge about the way this property developed decades ago, under probably two previous zoning codes. Really, it's a function issue about, you know, storage of, of grains, access for the equipment, farm equipment, et cetera. So, this was felt by the plan commission to be the best approach, and by the staff, is the best approach to, to trying to be consistent with the requirements of the code where, where, where practical.
There were also, I mean, the, the company, VidaPlus, did try and work with the neighbor to acquire property that would have made it work. That was difficult. They were able to acquire some properties, so they met the greater green space needs. They, they did everything they could to comply, and, and the staff worked with them to, to be able to come up with a plan that met as many of the requirements as we could, and still allow the company to move forward with their plans.
Thank you.
I'll move to suspend the rules to allow VidaPlus and their representatives to talk to city council.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, second by Ms. Bishop. All in favor of suspending the rules, raise your hands. Could you, could you guys come up and explain to us what the project, how the project will help you and, and why you want to do this?
Do you want to give John the first shot? I know he's online.
That's right, John's online. John Travers is on, we could ask him to. Keep going, Dan.
Folks, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect.
Great, I apologize here, a little bit of challenges with the background blurring, but I think we can get through this. The, the purpose and the intent of this project was certainly to comply with current codes, as Dustin outlined, to the extent possible, given the uniqueness of the site. But I think most importantly, this entire project stemmed from a safety issue we had in the fall of 2020, where we actually had a tractor-trailer unit tip over onto a side on the southernmost road abutting the property. That began a rather long process of us acquiring additional land from the Topols, and then taking a look holistically at the site, as well as the traffic coming from County Road 89 and, and County Road 8. This project will make significant strides in reducing traffic going through that intersection to turn around in our easterly parcel, as well as reduce overall truck dwell time, the amount of time trailers and tractors are on-site, by giving us increased flexibility with not only land acquisitions, but the project that is wrapped up in the third discussion point here. We fully support and agree with everything that Dustin's laid out. I think the planning commission has done a great job, as well as been a strong partner throughout the process, and we're here tonight to ask, obviously, for the passing of all three.
Is there any questions from council? All right, thank you, John. Any other comments or questions on this third reading?
I guess I have one more question for Catherine or Steve. Just, was there any public comment at the public hearing on, on these items? Any concerns that were raised?
Out of all the public comment at the last plan commission meeting, I don't recall any on these issues.
There was, there was none on this.
I had questions, but mine were resolved, so.
Okay.
There were none on this issue. There was no public comment on this issue.
And Lisa, my questions were in line with yours about, like, the benefit of the overlay, so.
Okay, great, thanks.
And, and they all three faced public hearings, so they had more than plenty of opportunity if they wanted to comment on it, and there was none.
Okay, great.
So, there, there were three hearings at the planning commission? Okay.
Each one of these items had a public hearing.
All right. Any other questions or comments? We see you now, John.
Yeah, modern technology. I'll have to get my kids to figure out how to run the rest of it.
I think we can all relate to that, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. The motion for a third reading is up for a vote, and that would be the third reading of ordinance 1236. Do we actually have to go through another reading of this, or the first, what we did earlier suffices? Thank you, Dan. All right, so we will do a roll call on the third reading for ordinance 1236.
Let's have a motion to adopt that. First to vote on-
Mr. Waters?
Hold on.
So, we have a, we already-
You still have, you still have the motion to amend and to proceed that hasn't been voted on?
Okay.
So, let's vote on that one first.
So, the motion to amend and proceed to the third reading is on the table, and that would be what we're voting on, correct?
But it's not the third reading.
But it's not the third reading yet, it's the motion.
Correct, this is, this is the motion to bypass the second reading.
And then after that, we would go to the third reading.
Along with the amendment, yes.
So, this is the motion for the amendment in the third reading. Not the third reading, but the, to make the change. Roll call?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quiddow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Motion passes, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. So now the, their business is the third reading of ordinance 1236.
Ordinance 1236A, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map, part of 1,0349 Topol Street, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, part of parcel number 246-0713-2312-002.
All right, is there any questions or comments here? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Still a motion to adopt, please.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to adopt on the third reading?
I move to adopt ordinance 1236 as amended.
Second.
So motion to adopt, Mrs. Bishop, the second, Mr. Fields. Now, is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call on the third reading of ordinance 1236.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quindall?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is ordinance 1237. This is the first reading. Lori, can you read ordinance 1237?
Ordinance 1237, amending City of Lake Mills, ordinance section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 246-0713-2311-017, and part of parcel identification number 246-0713-2312-022. Owners, Lake Mills Feed and Grain Incorporated, 1,0219 South Main Street, and Topol's Lakeside Park Incorporated, 1349 Topol Street. The city council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does hear, does ordain as follows. Section one, City of Lake Mills, ordinance section 660-44, the official zoning ordinance and map of the City of Lake Mills are hereby amended to zone the following described real estate consisting of approximately 4.453 acres, including parcel identification number 246-0713-2311-017, and part of parcel identification number 246-0713-2312-022, from planned industrial PI to planned industrial PI with planned development district overlay, and from multifamily residential, R312, to planned industrial PI with planned development district overlay, respectively, and as depicted in the attached certified survey map and legal description, which is incorporated herein. Section two, all ordinances or parts of the ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
All right, thank you, Lori. So that was the first reading. And we're probably looking for a motion to move it to the third reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading and proceed to the third reading of ordinance 1237.
A second.
So motion to waive the second reading, move to the third reading was made by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. All right, staff discussion?
It's pretty much the same as the last one. It's just putting in place the information we need to be able, under the zoning ordinance, to continue with the process related to the improvements at Lake Mills Feed and Grain site. Anything, Dustin?
No, the, the memo outlined some of the conditions, which were relatively minor, conditioned on some of the items that are on the agenda tonight, and then some screening, additional screening issues that we've, were discussed at the plan commission level that just need to be addressed with their, with their permit plans.
And this motion was passed at the plan commission?
Yes.
Looks like it's 22-5-5. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none. We're voting on the third reading?
We're voting on the motion to move to third reading.
Voting on the motion to move to the third reading. And then we will do the vote on the ordinance. All right. So the vote on the third reading, can we have a roll call, please? To move to the third reading.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quindall?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion, motion passes, five zero. Thank you.
All right, so can we have the third reading of ordinance 1237?
City Council Resolution 2232. My apologies. Ordinance 1237, amending City of Lake Mills, ordinance section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 246-0713-2311-017, and part of parcel identification number 246-0713-2312-022. Owners, Lake Mills Feed and Grain Incorporated, 1219 South Main Street, and Topol's Lakeside Park Incorporated, 1349 Topol Street.
Okay, that was the third reading of ordinance 1237. Is there any comment or questions? Seeing none, can we have the roll call for the?
Let's have a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Can we have a motion to adopt ordinance 1237?
I'll move to adopt resolution 22, or 1237, sorry.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Fields and a second by Ms. Curler. Boy, it's getting late. So that was the third, so we're voting now on ordinance 1237. Well, there's, is there any questions on ordinance 1237? Seeing none, let's have a roll call on ordinance 1237.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quindall?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. Thank you.
All right, we're almost through this. So next on the agenda is Resolution 22-32. Can we have a reading of the resolution?
City Council Resolution 22-32, conditional use permit declarations and findings, parcel number 246-0713-2311-017, and part of parcel number 246-0713-2312-022 by Lake Mills Feed and Grain Incorporated and Topol's Lakeside Park Incorporated.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to adopt City Council Resolution 22-32, conditional use permit declarations and findings.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mr. Fields. Staff discussion?
This is primarily to deal with the general processing on the site that's part of the industrial site there, and then some storage and the related conditions to the storage, such as screening and the materials used for the base. So any comments, Dustin?
No, that, that's exactly correct. It's that they do store, in their busy time, certain trailers on site on the west end of their site. Not the far west end, but still a thousand feet from, from Main Street. We do require conditional use for outdoor stores that isn't on hard surface. This is very similar to what's happened with JMEC when they have some large format items as well on site. So they will be properly screened according to code, but the surface will be that crushed aggregate versus asphalt or concrete.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Curler?
Dustin, I just had a quick question for clarification. Your memo talked about the screening, and it referenced that the ordinance requires screening from all public areas, but I wasn't 100% clear, is the bike trail considered a public area that, that has to be screened from?
Yes, and the landscape plan does show row of screening between the, the bike trail and, and this property. There is some, I'll say kind of scrub brush type screening on the west end. A lot of that's going to be replaced with new ArboVida screening. So I can't remember the exact count, but it will run generally along all of the, where the, the silo, I'll call the silos are, heading west to where the outdoor stor, or storage or parking of trailers is proposed. And then there will be no other screening on the south side.
Thank you.
So Dustin, you're saying they're going to do screening on the other side, on the north side, between Vita Plus and the bike trail?
Yes, that was a priority area.
Okay. Just want to be clear on that, because that was the other side of the, of where the addition was being made, so.
Yes, that, that screening, the, really, from what they've provided, there's a few extra plantings we are going to require there. We've talked about that with them. Our minimum planting size is seven feet for evergreen materials, so making sure that that's being addressed. So while they will grow up to 15 feet, and they grow pretty fast over a few years, but minimum size of planting is seven feet, so there should be some good hardiness immediately upon installation.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, seeing none, let's move forward with a roll call on Resolution 22-32.
Ms. Quindall?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, so that wraps up the council business. Next on the agenda is recommendations for future agendas. Any recommendations? Yes?
I will have a handbook for evaluating the city manager on updated handbook to present next time. Dan's been working with me and getting some input from PAA as well, so we'll have that to present on June 21st. And then I also had a question, do we know if we're going to be meeting on July 5th? Because last year we did not meet due to the timing of the holiday, and I don't know if any decision's been made on that for this year.
Has not, we historically have not, but I'll talk to Mr. Waters tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and Mill Pond, I also want to get on the agenda here soon. That's a discussion that's five years out in the future, and we, if we want to act on it five years in the future, we kind of need to look at that in the present, so want to have that discussion. Anything else? All right. So we will move, convene to the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, section 1C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdictions. So we will convene in closed session, and then after that, we will reconvene, but not in video. So the video portion of this meeting will cease at this point.
Mr. Waters? I think officially we need a motion, so I'll make a motion to convene into closed session for the reasons you stated.
Motion by Ms. Curler. Can we have a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
All in favor, raise your hand. That's five oh. So we will move to closed session, thank you.